All right, it is now six o'clock, so I'm ready to begin. You all set? All right, perfect. So I'd just like to announce that we are being recorded by Area 58, but we're also being recorded by our owl. And tonight, we are bound by law to start off with a school choice hearing. So I will open up the school choice hearing now. Is there anybody from the public who would like to participate in this school choice hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'll bring it back to the committee then. Traditionally, school choice is something that comes up every year at this time. In the past, when we've had low enrollment, we have decided to engage in school choice for a limited amount of time specifically for that reason. However, if we opt not to engage in school choice, like we have the past few years, we need to have a reason such as historically high enrollment in our school building. So would anybody like to make a motion to enter into school choice or not enter into school choice with a reason?
I'll make a motion to not enter into school choice for historically high enrollment and budgetary concerns.
Perfect. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it's unanimous. I'd now entertain a motion to close the school choice public hearing. And do I have a second? All those in favor? All right. So now we can relax a little. That's the most formal part of the evening for us. So move on to the approval of the minutes. From our March 25th, 2024 meeting, I just had one slight change to make. We got down to legislative agent report. It said the rural aid bill has been stripped of funding, should be the word. But that's the only mistake I saw in a very lengthy and important agenda. So thank you for the notes. Anybody else see any corrections that need to be made? And I have a motion to accept as amended. And do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, excellent. And school committee correspondence, I have received none. Joe?
None.
Okay, excellent. And on to new business for the town meeting items.
So where would you like to begin?
Let's just acknowledge that we have a special town meeting article coming up for the deficit we have for FY '24. The superintendent, myself, and Sarah Hickey did meet with the town administrator and brought them up to speed on where we were with the current budget deficit because of our special ed lines. We are now realizing about $184,000 deficit for this current fiscal year. So the town will have to move that article during special town meeting. That's the only time you can fund the current budgetary cycle. $60,000 of that, though, is for an alarm system that goes with our fire suppression system here at the Denit. We've received two bids so far. One was for $11,000 and one was for $60,000. We are quite sure that the job can't be done for $11,000 through conversations with our consultants. And we're hoping that the $60,000 is a high bid. We are anticipating a third bid to come in. We did put the $60,000 in as a placeholder. That's part of the $184,000. And if we encumber less than that, we can return the funds to the town at our July closeout. So we are potentially going to special town meeting. Liz asked us to hold back on the number until we got as close as possible to the deadline, so the number is as accurate as possible. But we are potentially asking for $184,000 for this fiscal year. Questions, comments, concerns?
When are you expecting the next bid?
It's imminent. We already have the bids out there, so they're rolling in at this point. We've received two. One was extraordinarily low and the other one, we're hoping, is high. So maybe we'll find something in the middle ground. But we wanted to put the placeholder in there because once we ask town for money at special town meeting, there's no going back to the well. So we'll convey this to the town manager that we put this higher number in there and hopefully we can return the offset in our July closeout meeting. Any other questions, concerns? And other than our budget, Jill, I think the Plimpton School Committee is not bringing anything else forth this year at town meeting? Or are we bringing anything else forth?
You may be bringing forth the part-time school resource officer at Silver Lake.
Through Silver Lake, right. So there is an item on the warrant for the part-time school resource officer for the middle school. That has been paid historically by Plimpton and by Halifax. Kingston pays for a full-time school resource officer at the high school. So Plimpton and Halifax split the part-time school resource officer at the middle school based on population. For us, that's usually about $14,000 to $17,000 ask of the town. There was conversation at Silver Lake of moving that to a full-time school resource officer. But we're between chiefs in the Kingston. The brand-new chief, I think, has about 10, 15 days on the job at this point. And it may have meant a new add and a hire. So the number that Silver Lake was quoted was $184,000. And Plimpton would have had to split its percentage of that. So we pulled back that version of the warrant, the article for the warrant. We're only going for the part-time school resource officer again this year. And we're going to have conversations with the new chief to see if we can get a lower number for using that officer, seven hours a day, 10 months a year, or not. So that will be another school-related warrant item, but not one for the Denit Elementary School. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right. So let's move on to unfinished business. Did we have the playground inspection over April vacation?
Yes.
Okay.
And there were a couple of things that we were a little deficient with that need to be addressed and we're in the works with that right now.
Okay. So we'll have an update on that at our next meeting?
Yes.
So it's a good thing that we did go through with that process, showing some deficiencies, and hopefully we can come back to the original contract there.
Some of the lock tight screws were not all put in properly. Some were a little bit longer than they should have been. Minor things like that, but something that could have been potentially dangerous. So it was a good thing that we did it.
Money well spent. And again, I would like to thank Kate for bringing this up. Your expertise in the area has definitely been a boon to us in the committee, and I thank you for bringing it up. And I'm sad it found deficiencies, but I'm glad we know about them now instead of several years from now. So thank you, Kate, for that. How about an update from the Finance Committee regarding solar? Do we need to pass over this for the moment?
I did not know if there had been an update from the Finance Committee.
I have not had an update from the Finance Committee on that, nor did they bring it up when we met with them about the school budgets. I think they were more focused on the school budgets at that time. So we'll have to circle back with them on that. Okay. Report to standing committees. Admin review. I have heard of no meeting being scheduled for admin review. Policy has had no meeting. Negotiations, I believe we're in the clear right now for negotiations, Dave?
Yes.
Wonderful. Union 31, there had been a joint meeting scheduled that had been posted. Silver Lake had moved its meeting and Union 31 people hadn't received the same notice. Luckily, it was caught in time and it was sent out to people before they showed up to a meeting that wasn't occurring. Do we have a rescheduled date for that Union 31 meeting at this time?
We do not at this time.
Right. Okay. How about Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
The last meeting was just the acceptance of the draft that we voted on at our last meeting. There was no more information.
Okay. Capital improvements. We have none right now to speak of that are new. Legislative agent. We achieved one thing and we lost one thing in the House version of the budget. We did get a $104 per pupil minimum increment, which is the historically high level of support from the legislature. In Governor Healy's version of the budget, we were going to get $30, so this is 74 more dollars per pupil. Unfortunately for us as a rural school district, Plimpton felt the pinch when $15 million of rural aid was cut to 7.5 million. So it came out almost as a wash. Very hopeful, though, that the Senate version of the budget will get it back to the $15 million mark, if not the full $60 million has been highlighted for years from rural schools from across the state. So stay tuned. The Senate Ways and Means Committee take up debate of their version of the budget starting next week. Single signature warrants.
Can we return to that when Sarah returns?
Yeah, and we can even pass over it if we need to, since they've already been signed. Okay, on to administration and CASA. Can you report on CASA, Mr. Venido?
I can tell you a few things that they have been up to, if that would be helpful.
That'd be great, thank you.
Especially part of the notes for my component here. CASA's been very busy lately. They provide refreshments at our last grade six honors breakfast. And they were very busy on the grounds here at Denit over vacation. We had some volunteers were able to relocate the giant Adirondack chair that was out on the playground to another location. And that was no small task. We had volunteers that repainted hopscotch in Four Square. There's a new shed out back on the playground. And when the kids came back from vacation, that shed was filled with all new playground equipment. So they spent a lot of time down here benefiting the kids.
Well, I get to interact with some of the members of the executive board, but if you could please extend our thanks to them for all of the efforts and the collaboration they put forth with us, I'd appreciate that.
Will do.
And Mr. Venido, since we're hearing from you now, would you like to go into your principal's report as well?
As far as enrollment, we're at 253 students. There's not a lot to update with staff, but there's certainly a lot happening around the school. We just had our sixth grade DARE graduation. We had two fifth graders read their essays and we viewed the sixth grade DARE videos. It was a great ceremony. It was a little bittersweet. And it was the last one for Officer Smith, who will be retiring at the end of the year.
Why don't we stop on that for a minute? You know, I was very happy to be there. I was very sad to see Dana's last time onstage with all of our students. You know, having two daughters go through this building and seeing how Dana looked after them, just like they were his own kids, meant the world to me. And I know other parents who've had kids in the school building feel very much the same way. So he's going to be sorely missed as our DARE officer, and we wish him well in his retirement. Anybody else want to share any words for Dana? All right, but big part of our school community. I've never known Denit without Dana.
Well, that's true.
Yep.
The new online kindergarten registration is up and running. Dave Murphy from Technology and our own Mrs. Judy Hanson worked to make that a reality for our three towns. I know they met several times working out little issues along the way, and it's up and running and thinking it's going very, very smoothly. So thanks, Judy. As Jason mentioned, we're still receiving quotes for an alarm system and interlock device for the water filtration system. Grade five jumps into the math portion of MCAS tomorrow, so we're really getting toward the end now. Speaking of the end of the year, June 14th was going to be a half-day. And that was going to be our last day of school. Then we had the day that we had to make up due to the lack of power. So to make that day a little better, we're going to switch things around and do Field Day on the 14th. It'll be a little bit more exciting than just a full day of school when everyone else is out playing. And Monday, the 17th, will be a half-day, and that will be our last day.
Any questions for Peter? So our school goes all the way until the 17th, which is a half-day.
Yes.
Just to be very clear. And when does Silver Lake end, Jill? On the Thursday before?
Yeah, is it the 14th?
The 14th.
The 14th, Friday.
Is that the Friday? So Friday, the 14th for Silver Lake? And Halifax and Kingston?
Yes.
But Plimpton will be coming back on a Monday for a half-day on the 17th.
We've done it before.
Just to be clear, of course, right?
Absolutely.
All right, so under your report, we also had a flyer request and a possible vote?
Could I skip down to the next one, Jason? Would that be all right?
Facility usage fees?
Yep, I wanted to talk to see. I was a little tardy in getting this put together, so I have a hard copy for you.
Okay. Yeah, this Mary's will be a little bit looking up before the meeting.
Thank you.
So Peter, if I could just lay the context for this before you get started on it, I'd appreciate that opportunity.
Sure.
So for those of you who were at our last meeting or were brought up to speed on our last meeting, we had to make some cuts to our budget for next school year. Some of the cuts included eliminating the overtime line for our custodial staff here at the school. So tonight, we're going to be looking at a facility utilization fee schedule. And this would help us to be able to still host organizations who want to utilize our school. But the fee would largely go to the staff that we would need to hire to cover the building during that time. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood why we were at this place right here. There's no overtime in the budget for the custodians for next year.
So essentially, Jason, we took a look at some other local towns and what they were charging for building use. Historically speaking, we've never really done a lot of charging for the building. My predecessor, some 16 years ago, had said, you know, the building belongs to the town and they should be able to use it when they want. So that was kind of why we had been doing what we were doing. But we've reached a point where we feel it's probably pretty necessary if we're going to be able to maintain the level of service to the town that we need to charge for the building. I think it's important to note that on this form that I handed out, when somebody comes to use the building and fill out the building use form, they need to indicate if they are a for-profit or a not-for-profit organization. If it's, you know, the Boy Scouts, we're not going to charge them. If it's the Girl Scouts, we're not going to charge them. But if it's going to be somebody either on the weekend or if it's a for-profit organization, we're going to have to go ahead and start to charge, which is going to be very new for our community.
I would also note that even nonprofits would be charged if in fact additional overtime hours applied. I would just note that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How much use does the building get this would actually affect?
Winter is extremely busy. We have an organization here every night. It's youth basketball. We have some Silver Lake basketball. We have cheering. We've had tumbling. We've had gymnastics. So winter is extremely busy. It's obviously much less of a burden on us if they're using the outdoor fields, but when it's the gym, it's extremely busy.
And I would make a friendly amendment if the school committee approves this. I would, in the last paragraph of the application before the signature, I would say that we hold the Plimpton School District and/or Union 31. To clarify. Could say Silver Lake Regional School District and Union 31.
Okay, I see.
Understood. No. Is there any other place where that is repeated? I don't see it.
I didn't either.
Okay. So we would need a motion for the facility use fee schedule and the building use application with the superintendent's amendment.
You want them separate?
No, we can do them together. Do you have question, comment, concern before we go? Go ahead.
Language on this, it's... First paragraph, first, we set permission as granted. We, who did we? Second paragraph, the last paragraph, we assume union all rights. It's just, I don't like contracts with language like that.
Too ambiguous?
Yeah.
I think it implies it's the person that signs the beginning.
I ended, no, I get that.
Organization renting. As opposed to an individual.
So are you asking who is reviewing this application? Allowing them? Denying them?
I think it's going more with the vague usually.
Yeah, the language itself, I mean, that is also a question.
Rob? Would you be open to accepting this tonight, but you giving some editorial feedback to me that I can send to council? And we can revote it next meeting?
Yeah, let me think.
Is that all right?
Yep.
And then we can put exactly what you want in and take out the stuff you don't like? Have council double-check it? All right. Does that sound good to everyone? I don't believe this is going to take effect until July 1st, right? Anyways, so we could pass over the whole thing, Rob, and we could clean it.
Yeah, that's fine. We can vote it in.
But just, we don't need this yet until July 1st. We have two more, right?
Just do it once next month.
So if you wouldn't mind, do you want some editorial work on it? Send it to me and me only. And then I'll send it to Russ, and we can do it at the next meeting.
I can do it.
All right. Kate, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we're going to pass over that for now. And we'll put it on the agenda for our Tuesday meeting in the end of May. All right, Peter, thank you for that.
Can I ask a DARE question to you, Peter? What's the training involved to replace Dana? And has that taken place with someone else? Notice there's been a rotation of officers in the building?
I can answer that a couple of different ways. We have, the DARE-specific training is held in New Hampshire. I believe it's a week long. The SROs that have been trained, that have been in the building, are looking to move in a different direction. They're looking at a couple of different programs that are similar to DARE but are not specific DARE programs. The chief and I need to have that conversation as to exactly what he would like to do with that. From what I have reviewed of what the new curriculum is, it covers a lot of the same topics. It's a lot of the same ideas. If your children have shared with you, it's not just about drugs and alcohol anymore. It's good decision-making, consequences, peer pressure. So it is really kind of...
Proper use of electronic devices?
Yes, yes, sir.
The ADA was here. He was speaking about that.
It hasn't been a purely DARE program, I'd say, for a number of years. We've kind of made it our own. So I think that we would be, if we had to, I think we'd be able to replicate it pretty well.
Okay. And I'll have a follow-up to that then as well. Are we planning on continuing the model that Dana set up with the first, the third, the fifth, and the sixth? Not just doing sixth grade?
We haven't gotten that for you.
Okay. All right. I just know that the younger kids enjoy those lessons a lot, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Is the timeline to have that packaged together by our closeout meeting before next year begins? Or is there no timeline on it?
I can't speak for the chief, but I'm going to try to make sure that that happens.
Okay.
Yeah, I think some of it would also be contingent on town meeting and how it goes there.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have that flyer request for us, Mr. Venido? Or is it no flyer request this evening?
I think we're good.
I think we're good. All right, sounds good to me. Sarah, do you need a moment for your financial report? Or you ready?
Did you talk about the town meeting?
We did, we did.
Can you tell me what number you settled on?
We said $184,000.
So I'm ready for my financial report.
All right.
We continue to have deficits in special education, transportation, tuition, and contracted services totaling $272,532. The special education foodkeeper has exhausted all available 240 grant and circuit breaker funds. After allocating any available funds to these lines, we will need to ask the town for $184,000 at town meeting.
And hopefully to return a little bit at our July closeout, depending on how that bid comes in for the alarm system for the well. Excellent. Any questions for Sarah? Okay. Moving on to Mr. Lynch, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you for the April curriculum and instruction and assessment update. I just want to share that here at Denit, we had a follow-up training for staff to be able to log into the new data dashboard system, which is EduClima. I think I shared that a couple of meetings ago. Essentially, it allowed staff to go in and log in and see the benchmark testing data like STAR, math, STAR reading, DIBELS, report card data, both like from this year and from past years about their current students. We felt like having, giving teachers an opportunity to do that this year about the students that they see in front of them would be a good way to see the value of the data. And then next year's rule-out will focus on using EduClima for tracking interventions for students. So when the students might like need additional support or extending their learning, we can use the data dashboard to do that. So thanks to our MTSS team representatives for helping with that. Jen Chafens, Christine Markelini, Melissa Farrell, Mr. Venido, and also Dave Murphy with his help from the data side. So we continue to make manageable progress. And we're excited that, I feel like it helps teachers because it puts lots of information that's in various spots in one centralized spot. So just a brief update about what we did earlier in April.
Any questions for Ryan? All right, on to our superintendent.
So in keeping with that theme, one of the things I wanted to mention is that I have asked Principal Venido in our next meeting to share with the committee the progress that has been made at the Denit over the past year with regards to the analysis of data, the use of data, the implementation of interventions. As you know, we have been working with Research for Better Teaching throughout this year, conducting classroom visits, but also providing some coaching and work as a team in terms of what the data process looks like and what it may or may not mean and what that information will have, what kind of impact that should have on our multi-tiered system of support in terms of determining whether or not additional support for a student is needed. So all of those things are coming together, and we thought it would be a good time for Pete to share where we are. And at this point, to see the different pieces of data that the school can now look at on one platform. To help anticipate also how we anticipate our students will be performing on the upcoming MCAS. And recognizing that we won't know the results of MCAS until late August, early fall, maybe. So the real purpose of this is to provide real-time interventions for students to help them meet grade-level standards and less about a score on MCAS. So the real benefit of this is being able to provide our teachers and our administrators with an insight as to what may be working and what we may need to try something else. We have no doubt that everyone's working hard. We want to know what's effective for different students with different needs.
Any questions for the superintendent?
The other item I'd bring up is just kind of a more district-wide update for you. And that is that Kingston is anticipated to need both of their EL teachers full-time next year. But that the budget that was recently voted and proposed includes the addition of .5 FTE, a part-time EL teacher at Halifax. So we remain hopeful that if Halifax is able to secure this position, that Plimpton may be able to contract with this teacher for hours at Plimpton. One of the difficulties for Plimpton is that there's so few students, but the need for hours is increasing. And finding someone who's part-time is very difficult in that area.
This is an issue that was stripped out of the Rural Schools Bill, which would have allowed smaller school districts to hire someone at a full-time equivalency, and the state would actually step in and backfill. So, if you could only find .8 worth of need and .8 worth of budgetary own-from-towns, the state would have come in and supplemented the .2 to make a person whole, to make it more attractive. But again, that was stripped out of the Rural School Bill, unfortunately. Any questions for our superintendent? Okay, so we're at the end of our agenda.
Yeah.
And I had asked Nikki Mahoney if she would consider running for a second term on the school committee with us. I don't know if she's made that decision yet. Selfishly, I would hate to lose her on this committee. She's been an invaluable resource. Her background in the healthcare sector, as we were emerging from the pandemic, was pivotal in some of the decisions we made in reopening the school and getting back to regular in-person education. And her time that she spent on our negotiation teams has also been a critical and crucial part of our team. So, I'm hoping Nikki will join us for three more years, but if she does not, I want to say thank you for her time and for her dedication to the students at the Denne Elementary School. With that being said, we do have Memorial Day at the end of next month, which means our next meeting will be May 28th, which is a Tuesday. That will be a reorganization meeting. And Silver Lake graduation is Friday, May 31st, with the rain date of Saturday, June 1st. Anybody else have any business before we adjourn this evening? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And...
Sorry.
Sarah?
If I could just give you...
Please.
...single signature warrants?
Yes.
That way, I don't have to remember them again a month from now.
That would be fine. Thank you.
There were eight warrants totaling up $159,568.88 that were sent out electronically for signature on April 22nd and then delivered to the town last week.
Perfect. Thank you, Sarah. So, we have a motion from Dan to adjourn. Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right. Excellent. Nice work, everyone.
Thank you.